Okay, good evening. I would like to call this meeting to order. Will the secretary please call the roll?
Mrs. Becker.
Here.
Mr. Cummings.
Here.
Mr. Goswami. Mrs. Gloss.
Here.
Mrs. Herrick.
Here.
Mr. Hong. Dr. James.
Here.
Mrs. Reese.
Here.
And President Lax.
Here. We have a quorum. Please rise to salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before I read the president's announcement, I would like to call for a moment of silence. We're going to observe that in memory of Joseph Chellis, who passed away on August 19th, 2024. Joe joined the district in 1987 as a data communication specialist in what was then the data processing department. As technology changed, so did his role in the district. Most recently, he has been an IT specialist at Churchill, where he helped countless students and staff manage their devices and troubleshoot all their tech needs. In 2010, Joe was recognized as the Support Staff Member of the Year at Churchill. He will be truly missed. Our thoughts and heartfelt sympathies are with his loved ones. Thank you. The New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law was enacted to ensure the rights of the public to have advanced notice of and to attend the meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting their interest is discussed and acted upon. In accordance with the provisions of this act, the East Brunswick Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published by having the date, time, and place thereof posted at the East Brunswick Board of Education offices. Written notice was also provided to the Sentinel, the Newark Star-Ledger, the Home News Tribune, the Alternative Press of East Brunswick, and the Municipal Clerk of East Brunswick. All Board of Education meetings, with the exception of executive session discussions, are videotaped for later broadcast. It is the policy of the Board of Education that videotape meetings are not edited for any purpose. Individuals who speak at the Board's public meeting should be aware of these videotaping rules. Evening, and I'm going to ask Dr. Valeski to give a superintendent's report and let us know what's been happening this summer in our district.
Thank you, President Lax. Good evening. I hope everyone has enjoyed their summer. Our learning, our early learning and kindergarten readiness academies through community programs had a fun-filled summer. Our 112 students enjoy weekly themes including STEM, beach vibes, superheroes, marvelous musicians, and so much more. There were exciting presentations from our East Brunswick Fire and Police Departments, and students enjoyed weekly preschool yoga, Spanish classes, and water play days. The children were thrilled to explore the scavenger hunt and to dig for dinosaur bones. The East Brunswick Youth Council assisted the district with two carnival days packed with face painting and multiple games. They had numerous vendor visits inclusive of mad science experiments and had their own Summer Olympics, and Snapology provided a STEM program where the students built their own roller coasters. However, all the fun was not only experienced by our little ones, but our K-12 students enjoyed many summer mini-enrichment camps. There were sports, STEAM, art, science, and so many more options. Our elementary students were so creative in so many programs, including an engineering program, and our junior high school and high school students enjoyed assessing footprints, blood spatter, and fingerprints to solve a crime in their National CSI program. In all, we had over 350 students participate in all of our programming, and it was a fabulous summer of 2024. From August 20th through August 22nd, we welcomed over 40 new certificated staff members to our district. During new staff orientation, participants were hosted by our administrative team, treated to lunch by the EBEA, participated in choice learning centers, and worked side-by-side with their mentors. This past week, we held orientations at all our schools. On Monday, August 26th, all our elementary schools had orientation for our preschool, early learning academy, kindergarten, and new students. Kindergarten students had an opportunity to spend time with their teachers, where they had a great time. Families received tours of our schools and had information sessions with the principals to start the year off. The staff at Hammershold welcomed incoming fifth-grade students during a two-hour orientation. Student services addressed topics that historically have created anxiety for students with a goal of smoothing their transition. Sixth-grade Assistant Principal Enoch Nyamichi organized a "Get to Know Your Fellow Classmates" activity while the fifth-grade Assistant Principal Tom Husar reviewed procedures and expectations for the upcoming year. All students also received their Chromebook. Student volunteers were present throughout to answer questions and welcome the class of 2032. It's hard to believe. On Tuesday, August 27th, seventh-grade students participated in their orientation program with the Churchill Administrative and School Counseling Teams. Students met with building administrators to learn what a typical day at Churchill looks like and the support that members of the School Counseling Department provide to students. Afterwards, students received a guided tour of the building with school counselors and ninth-grade student guides. Finally, students received and configured their new district-issued laptop with the help of members of our Information Technology Department. On Wednesday, August 28th, the high school successfully hosted sophomore and new student orientation. Our team of counselors, administrators, and support staff organized various informational sessions throughout the building. With the support of our senior student leaders, all students were guided through each session and received a comprehensive tour of the building. At the end of the orientation, the students had the opportunity to walk through their schedules to try to make the transition to high school as smooth as possible. It was a team effort, and we're looking forward to seeing all our students on the first day of school. The High School Counseling Department welcomed back the class of 2025 this week to kickstart their college applications with the College Application Boot Camp. There were over 250 eager seniors who attended a working session to start completing the Common Application, and seniors left with most of their applications completed and a head start on the application process. We would like to thank the East Brunswick community for coming out so strongly to support our school supply drive for our needy families. We received an abundance of wonderful supplies from our local Girl Scout troops, XPO Trucking Company, the Alters Gate Church community, and many other kind residents. Our EB families in need are so happy and thankful for the generosity of our EB bear community. And thank you to Daniel Blaylock and her team for organizing this event. Our directors, supervisors, and principals have dedicated countless hours over the summer to carefully plan impactful professional development for the 2024-2025 school year. Recognizing the vital role that continuous professional growth plays in enhancing the educational outcomes, we've structured two comprehensive professional development days in September and November, where each administrator will have PD sessions related to their content. Beyond these full days, our administrators are committed to leading after-school curriculum department, curriculum department faculty and grade-level meetings each month. During PD meetings, administrators will lead staff in content best practices based on ongoing data collections. These sessions will offer invaluable opportunities for collaboration in ongoing professional development, ensuring that our staff remains at the forefront of educational excellence. The East Brunswick Marching Band kicked off the 2024-2025 season with band camp that began on August 20th and ends today. This year's show theme is chords. The marching band has 84 students participating, which is bigger than any group in the last 15 years. On Wednesday, August 28th, the group gave a parent preview performance to showcase what they've learned in band camp these past two weeks. In addition to supporting our EBHS football team at games, the band will be competing in five marching band festivals across the state. And best of luck to marching band director Brian Toth, students, and the entire marching band staff on the upcoming season. Fall athletics are in full swing. Football's first game this evening at Edison, and the rest of our fall teams will open on Thursday, September 5th. All our teams are practicing in preparation for the regular season, and we are looking forward to an exciting and competitive fall season for all of our teams. Our varsity and JV cheer teams won their summer camp cheer competition at Pine Forest Cheer Camp. During the camp, all cheerleaders were invited to try out to be recognized as a UCIA All-American Cheerleader. We are proud to announce that 13 of our 50 cheerleaders achieved this accolade at the camp. Construction of the new girls' softball field hockey complex at EBHS have been progressing over the summer, and rather than describe this work, this video exhibits the site as it exists as of yesterday. So we're going to give you a quick preview. And Mr. Giuliani, if you want to point out anything of significance as the drone flies around here.
Well, in each corner, you will see the JV and varsity softball fields. Each of those fields is equipped with a dugout. What you're seeing about center screen right now is the layout for the batting cages. There are four batting cages. The unfinished area at this point that you see with the stairs, that is yet to be landscaped. Some additional work to be done in that area. And then over toward the top of the screen right now, you see the press box.
There is still much to do before this project is completed, but we are approaching the tail end, and we look forward to having our girls' teams enjoy this new facility. And just a few important reminders as we begin the school year. The first day of school for all students is Thursday, September 5th. Thursday, September 5th, and Friday, September 6th are single-session days for Churchill and the high school only, and I'm wishing everyone a safe and successful school year. Thank you.
Thank you. That was great. It's a busy summer. You like to hear that. And the cheerleaders, I believe, in November are going to be performing down in Disney World. One of the mothers reached out. We'll have them, we'll have them at a future meeting.
Yes.
They'll coordinate. Thank you. Yes. We always love to see them come and speak about that. All right. I believe, Dr. Bowley, you have 2023-2024 Assessment and Achievement Report for us?
As I'm getting older, my eyesight is not what it used to be, so I have my, the slides here because I won't be able to see the numbers that far away. Okay, so tonight I'm presenting to you four assessments that our students took last spring. The New Jersey Graduation Proficiency Assessment, the NJGPA. The New Jersey Student Learning Assessments, the NJSLA. The Dynamic Learning Maps, and the WEDA Access for Ls. So let's see if I can do this and this at the same time. Nope. There we go. Okay, so these faces are why we are all here. And as we get started, I want to commend and call out the hard work of our administrative team, both here at the Administration Building and the building-based teams, as well as our wonderful teachers and support staff who are in the schools, helping us do the hard work day in and day out to meet the needs of all of our learners. So who are our learners? Who were our learners last school year? Now, that's a little small, but what, if you can read it. What we have here on the left are our overall student demographics, broken down by the New Jersey Department of Education identified subgroups. And we have a little historical perspective there, and we can see our total enrollment numbers, and we can see some upticks in certain areas. Every percentage equals 81 students. And to the right, we're taking a look at our new enrollments of last school year. We had 431 new students coming into the district in grades 1 through 12. I did not include kindergarten because we can fairly assume all kindergartens are new students. So this is grades 1 through 12, 431 new students last school year, and this is the breakdown of those students. Of course, to note is the over 40% economically disadvantaged. We've seen the trend in the last couple of years with our new enrollments. Okay, our first assessment that we're going to discuss is the Access for Ls. This is an assessment that is state-mandated. It's administered for our multilingual learners. The state is not identifying these children as ELLs, English Language Learners, any longer. Now they are identified as multilingual learners, MLs. So students in grades K through 12 who are enrolled here in our district in our ESL program must take this exam, and you can see the scoring and proficiency levels at the bottom of the screen from a 1 of entering up to a 6 of reaching. When a child earns a score of 4.5, he or she will be exited from the ESL program. So overall, our whole student population, over 3,000 of our students here in East Brunswick Public Schools, all the children, over 3,000, or about 38% of them, speak 71 languages at home besides English. Every student, when they come to register in the district, the parents fill out a home language survey, and if the parents indicate that they speak another language at home, the child is screened for ESL services. At the moment, we have 347 students in our ESL program. We definitely do anticipate that number to climb as the year gets started. And the top four languages spoken by the children in our ESL program are Spanish, Arabic, Mandarin, and Russian. In the chart on the right, we can see out of those 347 students, roughly 75% of them are in their first or second year of ESL instruction. Most of the students after their second, third year exit the program, but some students do continue to need additional supports into year four or five. And here is a heat map showing the proficiency by grade for the access testing. Down the left-hand column, we can see the grade level, and then we see the number of students. The darker green shows where the scores were clustered. So we can see that for kindergarten, for example, most of the children are in the, performing in the Level 1 band, the entering band. Over to the right, we can see the participation rates. Over the last couple of years, we can see that we are up in our students' testing. And at the bottom, we see the number of students who earned that 4.5 and were able to exit our ESL program. Oops. Okay. Okay, moving on to our second assessment to report on, the DLM, the Dynamic Learning Maps. This is an alternative assessment. This assessment is administered for our students with most, the most significant cognitive disabilities. This is identified through their IEP and in consultation with their case manager. This assessment is administered in grades 3 through 8 and grades 11 for English Language Arts and for math, and then in science for grades 5, 8, and 11. To the right, we can see that over the last few years, the number of students participating in this alternate assessment has significantly increased from a 34 in 2018 up to 103 in 2024. The state does mandate that no more than 1% of total number of tested students participate in the DLM, so we did request a waiver as we have 2.4% of our students taking this assessment. And how did they do? The Advanced, At Target, Approaching, and Emerging categories, you can see color-coded. Down the bottom, we're identifying Language Arts, Math, and Science. Proficiency equals At Target or Advanced. The DLM is using essential elements to measure student proficiency, and these are aligned with the New Jersey Student Learning Standards for each grade level and each subject area, and modified as necessary. And then down the bottom there, you can see the proficiency year to year. So we are seeing some nice growth here. Moving into our SLA, our New Jersey Student Learning Assessment for English Language Arts and Math. These assessments were administered for, the grade level exam was administered for English Language Arts for students in grades 3 through 9, and in math for grades 3 through 8, and then students in 7 through 9 for the course they were enrolled in. All of our students did participate in the infrastructure trial and practice test so that they could get comfortable accessing the online test and all the resources that are available online. The scoring and proficiency here are performance levels, 1 through 5, and a score range is identified for each level. And in the box, you can see a performance level of 1, students did not meet the expectations. 2 is partially met the expectations. 3 is approaching the expectations. 4 is met the expectations, and 5 is exceeding the expectations. So here is a district year-to-year comparison for all of our students in mathematics and in language arts. In the red, we can see the state will average all the districts in the state of New Jersey from the wealthiest to the poorest and come up with an average for the state. The 2024 average from the spring that just passed is not available. That hasn't been released yet. So just for context, I put the 2023 New Jersey average passing rate in red at the top where you can see that. Okay, so we wanted to dig a little deeper. It's nice to see an overall passing rate, but let's, let's dive in. So there's a lot of information on this slide, but I think it's really important information. Down the left, we can see GE, General Enrollment, SWD, Students with Disabilities, ML, Multilingual Learners, ED, Economically Disadvantaged. Then down the left column, we can see the proficiency in the subgroups by test. So you can see the tests listed, and then the proficiency. So the three subgroups, Students with Disabilities, Multilingual Learners, Economically Disadvantaged, are listed there. Those students can be cross-represented. So in other words, a student could be a multilingual learner and also economically disadvantaged. The General Enrollment captures those students who are not in one of those three subgroups. And then on the right, we see the proficiency by subgroup by school. And this is mathematics. In the red column, we can see the state of New Jersey average passing rate from 2023. Again, the 2024 rates are not available yet. And to the far right, we can see additional subgroups, gender and ethnicity. And here's a look at the same subgroups and the same proficiency levels, broken down by test for Language Arts and broken down by school. The red column again is the average passing rate for the state of New Jersey of all the school districts in the state from 2023, not from 2024. And to the far right, we can again see the additional subgroups of gender and ethnicity. So we wanted to dig a little deeper. It's nice to look at how many students passed the test. We want, but comparing a fifth grade of this year and fifth grade of last year is certainly interesting information, but it's a completely different cohort of students, so we wanted to look at cohort growth. So here we see the percentage of students who increased a proficiency level or maintained their meeting or exceeding expectations. So how did the children in, who were in third grade two years ago, do last year when they were in fourth grade? This is showing us that 74% of those children in that cohort either continued to pass the test with a meeting or exceeding expectations or they increased a whole proficiency level. So maybe they didn't pass the test, but maybe they were a 2, and now they're at a 3. A child needs to earn 25 additional points to move up a whole proficiency level. So this was for mathematics, and we can see from year to year cohort proficiency and growth by test on the left and cohort proficiency and growth by school. So we're seeing both the averages at 66% of our children are continuing to meet or exceed expectations or who have increased a proficiency level in mathematics. And here is the same snapshot for, oops, I didn't move the slide, for English Language Arts. Students who increased a whole proficiency level by earning at least 25 additional points on this test or maintain their passing rate. Very nice growth here in the cohorts. Okay, so last year, I was here, so we've been talking about proficiency, district-wide proficiency, students who are earning 4s and 5s, and by school, by subgroup proficiency. Last year when I was here, we discussed proficiency, students who were earning a 4 or a 5, and I also called out the students who were in the 3 category. They were approaching grade-level expectations, and I told you that we would focus on them and provide them with additional supports this school year so that we, in the effort to, maybe bump them up so that they could get onto grade level. So with that work, here we see that crew of children who earned a 3 in 2023, and last school year we focused on them. 25% of them, you can see in the dark green in math, now are on grade level. And in the lighter green, 45% of them improved their score. So even if they're not on grade level yet, they did improve their score. And down to the bottom, you, we broke it down further by grade level. So grade 3, students who were in grade 3 two years ago to grade 4 last year, we see a 34% of those students who had a 3 last year now are meeting or exceeding grade-level expectations, and 59% of them improved their score. And we have the same breakout here for Language Arts. Again, two years ago, we had 16% of the students, testing students, performing in that band, the Performance Level 3, approaching expectations. With the intensive work that we provided and the support and attention, 41% of those children are now meeting or exceeding expectations, and 77% improved their score this year. And again, down in the bottom, broken down by the, the grade level, the cohorts. So we've talked about the students who have met or exceeded expectations. We've talked about the students who are approaching expectations. Our next move was to dive into who are the children earning 1s and 2s not meeting or partially meeting expectations. So we can see the students in need of the most significant support are disproportionately represented in Performance Levels 1 and 2, our Students with Disabilities, our Multilingual Learners, and our Economically Disadvantaged students. And these three subgroups will be the focus of our work this school year, and all attention will be put right here. And we can see here the Performance Levels for Mathematics and the Performance Levels for English Language Arts for, for these subgroups. Okay, our Science. The NJSLA was administered also in Science in only three grades levels, 5, 8, and 11. The scoring is completely different, of course. Why I keep it consistent? The scoring is completely different, of course, why keep it consistent for our science NJSLA. So to the left, again, we have the key. We broke it down by proficiency, by subgroup, by test. And in the right is the state of New Jersey average passing rate. I just want to let you know that our secondary science supervisor, Jessica D. Bandadetti, is on the state committee for this test and continues to report. There is a lot of conversation about the questions, the scoring, the validity, and so forth. So that being said, we can see our our performance here by subgroups and to the right, the additional subgroups of gender and ethnicity. Okay, so all of our students are testing, all of our students end up at the high school. So how are we doing at the high school? The NJGPA, this is the first year that it is a pathway for meeting the graduation assessment requirements. This is the third year we are giving this test. The first year was a field test. And this test is scored and deemed differently from all the other ones, of course, and students are either determined graduation ready or not yet graduation ready. So for language arts, we're happy to report that 92% of our 11th, last year's 11th graders who are now seniors are graduation ready compared to the state average of 82%. This is the current 2024 state average. And we can see subgroup performance to the right. In 2022, you might say, holy moly, look at that jump. The state changed the scoring. And here we are for mathematics, 80% and the state is at a 55%. And our subgroup performance to the right. And this was all of our 11th graders last year. So we've looked at the data, we've identified needs, what are we going to do about it? We're going to continue with our RTI model, our process. All of our children receive strong core instruction for approximately 80% of our students. That's effective and successful. Our tier one looks like supporting our teachers. It looks like professional development. It looks like data analysis and progress monitoring and working closely with our building leadership teams. And it includes parental involvement. In the spring, I surveyed all the parents in the district to understand what topics they may be interested in. And I'm planning a series of parent university workshops this school year. So some of our students will require additional remediation support in a tier two model. And again, they may be receiving support from the basic skills program or reading and math specialists. They may be enrolled in the ESL program. They may be participating in our summer support program. They may have a push-in teacher in the classroom. Again, with the assessment, data analysis, progress monitoring, and keeping the parents involved. For most students, they will come back down into the tier one with that targeted remediation. For some students, they will need further support, intensive remediation. They may move to a tier three. At that point, we are talking about an INRS plan. We are looking at the FLEX program. We are supporting our newcomers and basic beginners and our students with interrupted formal instruction. Some of our students come here from around the world and some of them have not been in school for a few years. So we are individualizing our support plan, our tutoring program and constant progress monitoring and parent communication. So again, I'd like to thank, you know, the board, Dr. Valesky, and all the administrative team and our staff who are in the classrooms, supporting our students every day. Thank you.
Thanks, Dr. Bowley.
Happy to take any questions.
Yes. Very impressive. I have one question going back to the proficiency by grade in the beginning. I know you said they have to get to the 4.5 for it to count and they move up, but I'm just curious, the bridging and the reaching, is that normal that the percentages of those students are so low there? Do children not get to that reaching level?
No, because they exit. When they when they earn the after between the expanding and bridging, when they earn the four, four, five, they exit and then they're not taking this test.
Oh, okay. So, all right.
This is just for the this exam, the access for Ls is just administered to students who are in the ESL program.
Okay, to get them, okay.
So if they've already exited the ESL program, they would not be taking this test.
Okay. I guess I was thrown a little bit because there was a percentage, it was a small percentage, but there were some there. So, okay, thank you for that clarification.
Yeah.
Dr. Hong, I just upgraded you.
Dr. Bowley, thank you for the nice presentation, but yeah, please stay with me. I have many questions for you. So for the first page, the new enrollment for 23 to 24, so apparently there's two numbers to spike up. Number one is the economic disadvantage student, which normally from historically about 18% to 40.3%. And bilingual learners from about 44% to 22%. Is this, I hope this is just a one-time spike, but it is the administrator, I want you guys develop a method to face this challenge. If keeping if this number staying high, which means the new income stu- students are changing and we need relocate our resource to help these students, this this leave to you guys for this. This may be a new challenge for East Brunswick because the township is growing up so quick, we're attracting so many new students from all different places. So they they are changing, so this is my first comment. And the second one, well, I have too many, I'm sorry. So for this DLM test participation, so the state limited 1%. Where East Brunswick get 2.4%. So what's the benefit for us to get more student to participate this exam?
I don't see that there's a benefit to the district. The students qualify for this alternative assessment based on their IP and based on their the work with their child study team, case manager.
So we're.
I mean, this.
Well.
More students are eligible for this alternative assessment here in East Brunswick last school year.
Yes, so we put 2.4%, which means we put more effort. So I just want to know the benefit for this more effort. Okay, so next.
Mr. Hong, I'm not sure we understand the question.
Okay, let me phrase it, rephrase it. The state allow 1% of students to take the exam. Where East Brunswick put 2.4% student to take the test. So I want to know the benefit to increase from 1% to 2.4% more student to take the test. So what's the benefit for us to get more students to take the test?
Well, I'm not sure we got more students to take the test. They they are eligible to take the test.
But already is 2.4%. Okay, we can talk to you later, you know, it's very complicated question, so I understand. So we can talk later, okay. So another comment is for the DLM again. So the science, so historically, we only got 24, 25%. So this is very very low for the, you know, for other, for the language, math, we got close to 60%. For the science, we got 25%. So I want to know what kind of effort we need to do to help our student achieve better score for the science.
That's a great question, Mr. Hong. If you see underneath the the bars, you can see in parentheses, an N equal and a number. And you can see that a lot less students took the science exam. Some students are eligible to take the DLM in certain subject and then they'll take the NJSLA in a different subject. So you can see that 97 students took the English Language Arts exam, 103 took the math, and only 32 took the science.
So very good answer. And I got it now, which means our best student choose not to take this test. Very good, thank you. So for NJSLA math, so we can do proficiency and positive growth. So from math seven to math eight, we got only 14%. Why this is such significant difference? So for other grade, we got 70% and the lowest one was 56%. But why for this two grades, only 14%?
We had a very small cohort of students with some needs, presenting with some needs in that in that group. We are continuing to monitor and support those children.
So if we need more teacher or more resource, and I believe this board is willing to support because math is very important, math is everything. Math is the national security to help this country to compete with other country on this I guess too many, I better let other board members to ask. I'm sorry to the public, I came in late because I have a medical appointment, so I'm sorry about that.
So can I can I answer Mr. Hong's first question? He mentioned about reallocation of resources, mentioning the the N of 431 students that we have enrolled that this sample was taken from, representing 43 or 40.3% economically disadvantaged. So that is a that is a small subset compared to our total population, but that is based on our enrollments for 23, 24. We're going to continue to monitor that as we go for 24, 25. But we continue to look at allocation of resources based on students' needs and and what we have to put into the program so we support every single student.
Yes, thank you. The purpose for my for me to ask that question is we need looking forward. If this is a trend, then we must deal with it. If it's only one time spike, well, we still need to help those students. So when please keep your eyes on the trend, how this things developed.
Well, I think that I don't want to speak for Dr. Bowley, and she can weigh in. I think one of the reasons for taking this report to a granular level, as she presented tonight, was to look at data in a finite amount and figure out where we need to target our resources. And so getting the the most impact for the financial resources we have. And we will continue to advocate among our legislators to increase those allocations to the district. Because as everyone knows, we are under the school funding formula and that is going to impact and drive the funding that we're going to get from the state in years to come. It impacted us last year, it's going to impact us in years to come.
Thank you, thank you very much.
I have a more specific question, I think. So as as, oh, God, I was about to, as going into my 33rd year as a classroom teacher, I have this quandary of I don't like standardized testing because it's very stressful for the students and sometimes I feel that the test doesn't match what the children have actually learned. But in contrast, I love data-driven instruction. So I'm looking at the graph for the response to intervention and I love like looking through the tier one and the tier two. This is not specifically for students with IEPs. This is all students, these interventions.
Yes.
So I love that we are individualizing for all students that have these needs. That's exactly the way we should be heading. My question was, if we're individualizing for students, who's developing or who's deciding what each student needs? Is this a reading specialist position? I'm just curious, whose oversight this is?
My team and I meet regularly with the building leadership teams and the principals often have their reading math specialists, their student assistance specialists, as well as, you know, any other, the nurse as needed, speech therapist as needed, LDTC, and they come together weekly and they go through students who are at risk in the school and they review student by student and they identify the student needs and they create an action plan for that child.
That's fantastic, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Bowley. This has been very helpful. My question is specific to the NJSLA slide with the colored bar graphs that show the COVID bar grayed out. Obviously, this is not specific to us, but we haven't come back up to where we were pre-COVID. We are significantly above the state average, but not back to our prior performance and it looked like we plateaued a little bit between 23, 24. You I think you covered some of this, but I'm just wondering if you could maybe go into some specifics about the ongoing challenges that we're having, not getting back to that pre-COVID place and some strategies that we have to get over that.
Yeah, that's a great question. So we are almost, you know, there. It's important to note that in the mathematics, the two years ago, Algebra II and geometry counted as a graduation assessment pathway and children could have earned a three, four, or five. So that was calculated into the scores as a passing rate. This year, the GPA assessment is the first graduation assessment pathway and Algebra II and geometry do not count anymore. And so we are reverting back to the old passing rate of a four or a five. So that skewed our numbers a couple percentage points. But your bigger question is how are we addressing the needs of our students? And, you know, looking at the demographics and as Mr. Hong said, you know, we're very happy to welcome students from all over the country and all over the world who are coming to our classrooms with very different needs. And we are certainly working very hard with the entire school community to address those needs, working with the counseling department, working with student services department, making sure that we're attending to all of our students. And this year, we will have a special focus on our students with disabilities, our multilingual learners, and our economically disadvantaged students to make sure their they and their families have everything they need to support their children so their children can come to school and be available for learning. Absolutely.
Thank you. So in terms of if our economically disadvantaged cohort is going up, as Mr. Hong was mentioning, what do we think we would need then in terms of capacity to actually focus on that group if it's growing? You know, what's the most important resource that we would need to re-channel there?
I mean, I don't know if there's one resource, you know, the continuing professional learning for our teachers so that they can successfully differentiate in the classroom to meet the various needs of the children. Again, the social emotional component, supporting the families at home. We were happy to receive the High Impact Tutoring Grant and we provided tutoring throughout the last school year and over 1,000 hours of tutoring this summer. We anticipate being able to move into the school year and continue to provide tutoring. So I think it's multifaceted and it's really spending time with the building leadership teams and talking about each child and what that child's profile is and what are the best supports for him or her.
Thank you, Dr. Bowley.
Mr. Gerson, you have a question?
So mostly, if you see you are the last one to ask questions and everyone thinks alike, most of the questions are asked. So I have to add on top of Ms. Dr. Hong's question is, you mentioned that 431 students were added to this 23, 24, 24, right? So I want to know that that is a delta or that is a total number of students added?
That's the total number of new children who registered here in our school system last school year.
Is there any place where we I can find out how many also left?
Yeah, I can definitely get that information for you.
And do you have any information that which grade has the highest additions?
I can I can find that out for you.
Because I want to do my studies to know that which grades are coming more because this town is growing, like growing, right? Are the new families who are adding or some people transferring, how I want to know this one? And also the question about the econo- economically disadvantaged. So as you show that 80% compared to NJSLA, 55% performance rate, right? Which we've gone from last slide, this one.
Oh, yes, sir, yes.
Okay, so do you think that if you work towards this economically disadvantaged or the student with disability? the student with disability goes up and we focus more, this eighty percent goes more up?
I do think so.
And what is the reason from twenty-twenty-three to twenty-twenty-four, which we just saw five percent growth? What was the reason? What you fixed? What was fixed?
In math?
So if in math, even if you maths in math or
Oh, yes.
English, what happened which made us grow from seventy-five to eighty?
You know, we're continuing to work with our teachers, so that they are have all the resources and professional learning they need, so that they can differentiate in the classroom, so that it's, you know, they're maximizing their instructional time in the classroom, working with small groups in the classroom, and making sure they're closing gaps for students, providing, you know, the tutoring program, I think, will help close gaps for students, and and just being more responsive overall to the the needs of the children in the classrooms.
So I just see in the English only one percent improvement, but math has a bigger improvement, yes?
Yes, we did also adopt a big ideas math program last year in the in the secondary classrooms.
Thank you.
Could you tell us a little bit more? You touched upon the High Impact Tutoring Program. Many folks may not be aware of the importance of that program and how it helps our students.
We received a grant from the federal government for a significant amount of money, and that money was earmarked specifically for high-impact tutoring. So it had to be a research-based program. It had to be implemented with fidelity. It had to be rigorous. It had to be timely. There were constraints around it. And so we were able to provide that tutoring in grades K through sixth, K through twelve, throughout the district, starting in, I think, January, and we continued on into the summer, and we plan to continue on into the into the fall, until the funds are exhausted.
So I remember at the high school, there's also tutoring for the for certain folks. Like you said, there's certain students that have to be certain requirements. But I remember for midterms, for finals, was that part of that grant?
That grant could only be used for language arts and math, for English and math.
Okay.
We had additional funds available that we were providing drop-in support and and support for other subject areas.
Because we noticed that at the high school, you know, the students, there was additional support, and it made a big difference. So thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
So I'm just going to go back to first, thank you for your presentation, and then thank you for just saying two of my favorite words, evidence-based and fidelity. So thanks, because I love those. So back to math. We know based on this testing results from New Jersey and throughout the country in the past few months, that math scores for students that were in late elementary through middle school years during COVID are having a really hard time catching up. Difference is in learning. Math isn't so easy to learn through computers. You know, I won't age myself, but when I learns, right, we worked with our peers, and we did a lot of group work, or your teacher would say, work with somebody to figure out a solution. And so obviously, that didn't happen during COVID. So what are you hearing from students, from parents, from when you have your meetings with other administrators regarding what we think we can do to continue increasing math scores? What struggles are students having in math areas? Is there any other extra support? I see, you know, as others referenced, all the different tiers for all students. But are we finding it particularly hard to catch up in math? And what are we hearing from our students?
That's a great question. So everything you said is is accurate. We are looking at cohorts and cohort growth and really drilling into the the group of students. This year, in seventh grade and in eighth grade, students typically have math class on an A day or a B day. This year, we are implementing a support class for students who are a little behind, and a basic skills class for students who are further behind. So those children will be having math every day in an effort to catch them up to grade-level expectations. We're also working very closely with our teachers. Again, it all comes down to the teachers in the classroom, to ensure that they're fully supported and able to meet those needs of the children. I think our continuing with the tutoring, I hope to see less learning, summer learning loss with the thousand hours that we provided this summer. So it is a great question. There's no quick answer, but we're we're on it, and we are dedicated to supporting the students.
Great. Thank you.
Just quickly, thank you for the report. It's nice to see the progress that's being made, and good dialogue in terms of areas to improve. I have a it's related, but a little bit perhaps off. There are two other companies mentioned on the cover letter here, and I was just curious who they were and what role they serve. On the the dynamic learning maps and WIDA, if I'm pronouncing it correctly?
WIDA. WIDA is the Access for Ls. On the first couple of slides that we reviewed in the in the program, the the exam that's given to the multilingual learners, WIDA is the company. And then the DLM, the Dynamic Learning Maps, is the assessment that we talked about after the access scores, that alternative assessment that's given to our students with the most significant cognitive disabilities.
Mr. Hong.
So it's now second round, okay. So for the first, I want to thank you, Dr. Vlaschke, for the good job to help our students, to teach our students, to prepare our students for their future. And it's for the intensive remediation support for the students who really need help. You know, I understand we have a high-impact tutoring program running for all K to twelve students. I I want to, can I suggest, if we can mobilize our high school kid, they're they are really good. They can have them to tutor our student in lower grade, and then they help them to understand, share their experience, and improve their performance. So that's just my suggestion.
Thank you, Mr. Hong.
I think I I'm sorry to jump in. I think I know at Churchill, they had high school students coming after school
Yes.
and working with students that needed extra help. And it I believe it it's had went very well, and they had, you know, quite a few students participating. And I agree, building on that is
Building on that is great.
Yes.
Because I can say my son went down to Hammer Shuld, and there was the care club, and he used to help at Care Club. So there is opportunity for, but it always could be expanded, you know.
And National Honor Society.
Yeah, it's also, yeah, service hours and things like that are are in play here, too.
Thank you so much, Dr. Bowley.
You're very welcome. Before I go, I just want to report that Melissa Caruso is our new supervisor of alternative programs, and she is working very closely with five of our seniors to ensure that they are successful in earning their high school diploma and associate's degree in June.
Wow.
Five students this year.
For this year, yeah.
Yep. It's great. She's going to be great. Thank you.
That's wonderful. Not to put you on the spot, my new friend, but for everyone here and out there, Rishi?
Yeah.
Rishi is our new student rep. I know the school year has not started yet, but I would love you to get to say a quick hello if you want to tell us anything about the summer, or anything you're looking forward to at the high school this year.
Yeah, perfect. I did actually create a script with my friend Chris, who is last year student, education representative. So it was good connecting with him, touching base. So I have, like, I wrote this whole script. I don't know if you guys want me to?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Thank you. So good evening, ladies and gentlemen. It is truly a pleasure to start my role as Board of Education Representative, and I hope to keep this board and this community thoroughly informed about the ins and outs of high school and allow you guys to do your work to the best of your ability. With that being said, I want to talk a little bit about student council, what we've been doing over the summer to prepare for this upcoming school year. So earlier this month, Student Council met to conduct this annual leadership workshop that provides the students, the executive board, a chance to get to know each other and plan key events that occur at the start of the year. During our workshop, the rest of the board and I had the pleasure of meeting and working with Dr. Bashore, and we had a pleasure of being featured on his new and trending Instagram page. So that was a throughout the day, we engaged in more activities. We brainstormed ideas on how to garner membership and get as many students as possible to be student leaders for this upcoming school year. And we focused on how to get school spirit up for for events like the Spirit Valley and Homecoming. And finally, we went, we met with our grade-level administrators and talked about potential new events like at Holiday Market, where students could create their own goods and items and then sell them. And then a more school-wide event like Battle of Classes, where grade grade levels can compete against each other. Overall, it was a very productive day and left a lot to be excited about this upcoming school year. In addition to this workshop, there was also a college application boot camp, like Dr. Vlaschke talked about before. The boot camp was hosted by our Masonic Counseling Department and provided students with tremendous opportunity to learn about the college application process. More than two hundred and fifty rising seniors were guided through the Common App software and taught ways to find out about applying for schools that were ready for them. From talking amongst my fellow senior classmates, it is clear that there's a lot of stress and anxiety, but our college, our guidance counselors are doing a great job of providing resources and relieving a lot of tension for students. While some students just are looking beyond high school, some students are beginning their journey within high school. Our sophomore orientation was yesterday, and it was great from hearing some of my from some of my senior friends and how they led some of the sophomores throughout the school and introduced the hallway system and where their classes are going to be for the upcoming year. And I think all our students are ready for the first day of school, especially our sophomores. And yes, those ready words, the first day of schools, kind of make us sink in our seats and realize that our summer relaxation enjoyment is is over. But with an amazing new principal, engaging events on the way, and bright new sophomore class leaves a lot to be desired and something to look forward to. So thank you.
You did Chris proud.
Nice.
And hopefully, as you're doing your applications now, Naviance, have you been, that's a wonderful tool.
Yeah, Naviance is a great tool.
Are you taking advantage of it?
Yeah, the scatter plot. And I know a lot of my friends have been using that. The scatter plot provides. I think the guidance counselors met with us, and they're doing a great job of explaining like how it helps students, so.
So lucky for you, you get a whole panel up here of additional parental units
Yeah.
that are very happy to help you through the process, will, you know, look at your essays, give you lots of support. She's laughing. We have some English people up here. But yes, so we'll look forward to hearing your journey and and being there to support you along the way.
Thank you so much.
And welcome.
Nice job.
Okay. Bringing us to the good of the cause for the public, the Board of Education recognizes the value of public comment on educational issues and the importance of allowing members of the public to express themselves on school matters of community interest. To protect the privacy of all students and staff, concerns regarding individual students and staff members should generally be addressed by first meeting with the appropriate administrative staff. We do have a lot of people here this evening. We are going to have a thirty-minute open session right now. We do have a very lengthy closed session, but we will make sure that the public session, if need be, will be opened again after that. So I'm going to ask the first person to come up if you could state your name and address for the record.
Good evening. Dom Sclafani, Two Morgan Place. Before I begin, I would just like to point out the irony that you say you're going to work on special education scores this year, yet you fired the man who oversaw special education. So I am here to talk about another controversial decision you guys made recently, and that was the decision to not rehire my old football coach, Andy Steinfeld. Coach Steinfeld, or Stein, as we call him, has been with the program for more than twenty years. He took over my junior year, and he completely revamped the program. We went from two and nine my sophomore year, to four and five my junior year, to four and four my senior year, which was the first time EB had a record of five hundred or better in ten years. Then the year after I left, we went eight and two with a playoff spot, and he was named Coach of the Year in two thousand twenty-one. On a personal note, my dad suffered a massive heart attack my junior year on a game on game day, and Stein was there for me and checked up on me every day until he was discharged. He even dedicated the win that night to my dad. Now, sure, the past two seasons weren't the best, but one, football rates are are declining, and two, we play in the toughest division in the GMC, and three, we lose all of our best players to private schools like St. Thomas, St. Joe's, or Rutgers Prep, to name a few. Why did they do that? I don't have the answer for that, unfortunately. And but that's just that's not just football. That's every sport. I'd also like to point out, it would be one thing if this was done in the winter or the spring, but you did this at the eleventh hour, two weeks before the season officially started, which is incredibly shady. Not to even mention the impact this has on the players. The seniors this year, who played under him for three years, were probably really excited to play under him again this year one last time, but they got told at the last minute their coach was not coming back, and didn't realize this year was the last time they'd they'd have him. I know how this feels, because my sophomore year during the winter season, Coach Molar said he wasn't coming back to coach, and there were tears in the room. I firmly believe you made yet another mistake. All in the span of five months, you've had a budget disaster, cut Dr. Figaro and Mrs. Kennard and fifty other staff members, spent twenty-five K on a national high school principal search to hire someone who basically worked right down the street, ignored your constituents, a yearbook debacle, ignored hate in the schools, continued to ignore your constituents, and then chose not to rehire a beloved coach two weeks before the season starts. Did I miss anything? I'm shocked that you treat a longtime staff member who grew up here, went to school here, taught here, and coached here for more than twenty years like he didn't even matter. But then again, you guys pretended Dr. Figaro didn't exist for the past five months either. So I guess I shouldn't be that shocked.
Thank you, Mr. Sclafani. Could you state your name and address for the record, please?
Jennifer Figaro, one oh one Ruslane. Good evening. My name is Jennifer Figaro, and I am running for the Board of Education this November, along with three other excellent candidates on our sleeve. We are here to hold the current board and administration accountable for decisions that they make that affect not only our schools, but our tax dollars. Dr. Vlaschke, during the board meeting back on May ninth, you stated that everything about you is available. You have to look hard enough. So we took your advice, and look what we were able to find. We obtained the board minutes for the closed session of the board meeting from February first, two thousand twenty-four. Unfortunately, the minutes are redacted, so most of the information is blacked out in order to protect the employees that were being discussed. So our research team looked even harder. And guess what we found? It's a contract that extends your current contract past two thousand twenty-seven with all the salary increases and bonuses that you were to receive. My fellow candidates will speak more about your proposed contract. But this is what is disturbing to me. This contract was discussed at both the February first and February fifteenth board meetings. At this point, you were already well aware of the budget crisis this district was facing, but you turned the other way and ignored the budget crisis when you pushed this contract through to the county superintendent's office. I have the contract, along with the email from Mr. Juliana, that asks for this contract to be approved. You said you were going to take your raise for this coming school year. I guess you would say that because the intended raise was well over the seven thousand dollars that was in your current contract. The actions and intentions of this administration and board are transparent. We see right through them, but it's not with the transparency that the community is asking for. Vote Figaroa, Falco, Figaroa, and Braun. Integrity, inclusion, innovation for the Board of Education in November. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Figaroa. Can state your name and address for the record, please?
Lou Figaro, one oh one Ruslane. I want to, first of all, thank everyone for coming out tonight, and I also want to wish everyone, all our students, our families, our staff, principals, a great opening. I come to you tonight, and I'm disgusted. I have to apologize to the community, and I have to apologize to the people here and the good people I worked with in this town. I had no idea this was going on. The salaries, the increases, all of our meetings about, we need programs for kids. We don't have the money. It's not there. Now we know where the money is. Sorry, I have to take a minute, because this is this is emotional to me, and I'll tell you why. Anybody remember the Six Million Dollar Man? I think it was a seventies program. Most of you are probably too young. I'm going to tell you a little bit about the million-dollar superintendent.
Talk to the audience.
Okay. So we have a superintendent. Now, I believe on May ninth, you said you get no bonuses. You actually said you were appalled that you have to talk about, that you have to you have to even say these words. I don't I don't get a bonus. Seven thousand dollars you had said the previous night you would take on the on the the one evening that you you met with the community. You said, I'll take my seven thousand bonus. Nobody had a problem with that. Well, folks, we're looking at, at the end of this year, two hundred and ninety-five thousand with a ten thousand dollar bonus, eleven thousand next year, three hundred and five thousand, twelve thousand bonus, twenty-six, twenty-seven. bonus, $11,000 next year, $305,000, $12,000 bonus, '26-'27, $317,000.
I'm sorry, I just want to remind you to have your remarks to the board. You're speaking to the board at this point. If you could just...
I have a problem with my neck, so sometimes I go like that. Is that okay? Is that all right with you? All right. Also, year four, $315,000 with a $13,000 bonus, and year five, '28-'29, $327,000 with a $14,000 bonus added, making his salary 341, the highest in the state on record. Now, if, thank you, if he was going to total out, his compensation is $447,600. The million-dollar superintendent. I also want to remind you, folks, first of all, for the board members here...
10 seconds.
You had to have known about this. I wonder why there wasn't as much conversation as there was tonight on this, because we could have covered a lot of very important financial matters with this.
Time.
Thank you, Dr. Figaroa.
The only thing East Brunswick about you is your tie.
If you could state your name and address for the record, please?
Anna Braun, 9 Race Track. It's about time that we have a team of experienced K-12 educators on the board working alongside business people to ensure the policies being made are educationally sound and necessary. I'm a retired teacher, having worked at Hammer Sheldon Churchill for more than three decades. When the grade reorganization was announced, the staff was horrified, not because it was necessarily a bad idea, but the timing of it so soon after lockdown meant that the kids going into fifth grade would have their educational program upended again. Now, there's no playground at Hammer Sheldon. Parents understandably want one built, and yet no one thought about this before proposing the creation of Hughes. An extra 700 kids have been crammed into Churchill. Have you ever been to the Churchill cafeteria during lunch periods? I have. I had lunch duty. It was overcrowded and unpleasant before you spent $9 million on a temporary classroom wing. Cafeteria, media center, and hallways have not been expanded. Did you consider that the seventh graders would also be using the same common spaces as the rest of the student body? Did it occur to anyone to do some research first? You have the collective educational expertise of hundreds of staff members at your disposal. It wouldn't have cost a dime for you to send out a survey to the teachers to get ideas for making the grade reorganization work, or, you know, even if it was necessary. Now, I don't normally indulge in conspiracy theories. However, as soon as these plans came out, I thought, they're going to purposely overcrowd Churchill and make it so miserable that parents will be willing to vote for anything. Now, I really want to be wrong, because if I'm right, that's disgusting. A nearly half a billion-dollar high school has been proposed. Given the current financial climate, there's no way the voters are going to pass it, especially since we don't even know how much our taxes are going up. My theory, Plan B is coming. Maybe one half the cost of the original build, one the taxpayers can get behind because we'll be so relieved it isn't a half a billion. We have been manipulated and backed into a corner. Churchill is a hot mess, and the clock is ticking on how long the temporary classrooms can remain. Who's the biggest loser in all of this? The kids. We have business people who have little to no K-12 classroom experience making major educational decisions.
10 seconds.
And it shows. Poor educational decisions cost us more in the long run. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Braun. Could you state your name and address for the record, please?
Jamie Falco, 11 Taft, Class of 2001. Good evening, friends. My second, sorry, my apologies. My second grade teacher at Bowman Row was Mrs. Rothman. Mrs. Rothman loved the New York Mets, and she loved bananas. And we loved her. She was the first teacher to inspire my critical thought. When we were done with classwork, we could quietly get a workbook and work on critical thinking assignments. Our tangible reward was a Tootsie Roll or a tiny treat, but the true reward was learning how to analyze problems and sequentially and logically work through them. Fast forward to today. I'm not trying to brag, but I'm pretty good at puzzles. I'm really good at medicine, and I'm really, really good at reading through redacted documents. Documents left bearer than the Grinch left Whoville. But listen, I can offer request documents from many people in this state. I do want to call to the board's attention some updates to Title 18A last year. 2023 New Jersey Revised Statutes Title 18A, Education Section 18A 11-11. Public notice required for alteration of contract terms of certain employees. In short, you are legally required to provide 30 days' public notice prior to any superintendent or business administrator contract negotiations. The board is required to hold a public hearing and shall not take any action on the matter until the hearing has been held. The board shall provide the public with at least 10 days' notice of the public hearing. I do ask if there was public notice because I did not see it. I don't know when this hearing took place. I have in my hand a signed contract from November 3rd, 2022, but yet a new proposed contract submitted for this year with an effective date of July 1, 2024. This would explain the superintendent's inability to speak to his own contract expiration date at the April budget meeting. What metrics or measurements were applied to justify a new contract with a teacher's salary worth of raise? Lay off special education teachers despite knowing our district needs have increased? Failed to recognize a culture crisis within our high school? In a March 2024 article from Tap Into, Dr. Valeski was quoted saying, "The immediate priorities of the board remain: finalizing a tentative budget for the 24-25 fiscal year, continuing to refine proposals for a new high school and/or extensive renovations to the existing high school facility, recruiting and retaining the highest quality staff, and positioning the district for the next decade while maintaining excellence in academics, athletics, and the arts." Terminating over 50 employees from the district is the opposite of retention of the highest staff. I've spoken about the budget, and I have no clue about the high school. Where is this accountability? You speak to excellence, but I believe we can bring integrity, inclusion, and innovation. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Falco. Hi, if you could state your name and address for the record, please.
Danielle Oviedo, Bradford Road.
Name again, please.
Oviedo.
Thank you.
Just two questions. I just wanted to know if there was a way to confirm all the board member emails. I feel like I've, I don't know if I have the emails correctly because I've sent out emails and no one's ever confirmed, so that's number one. If someone could get back to me later. And two, I know that in the fall, in the spring, there were some rumors at the high school that the lunchtime was getting shortened. I don't know if that was a permanent change, but just food for thought. For the kids that can't bring lunch from home, those students that are in reduced or free lunch, I know that my kids are little. I don't have high school kids. But when they don't have the opportunity to get lunch from home, they have to stand in these long lines. And I've heard kids say that they don't have enough time to eat. I think that you have to take that into account when you're making these decisions, because they don't have enough time to eat. And maybe not everyone up there has ever had a chance, may not have had to reduce or free lunch. I have. And I think that everyone needs to start thinking of those types of students when you're making those decisions.
Arun Ayagari, 20 Brook Hill Road, East Brunswick.
Can you repeat your name, please?
Arun Ayagari, Alpha Romeo Uniform, November, first name. Ayagari, 20 Brook Hill Road. I'm going to take a different approach. I'm here purely for appreciation. I realize, as board members, as a resident, I realize, school board in general, not just here, but all across the state, they're mostly on the receiving end of the flak. So, I'm here to appreciate all the great work school boards in general do, that includes East Brunswick. So, I want to take, at times, this could feel, many times, this could feel like a thankless job because you guys don't get paid for it. In general, so I would like to appeal to the residents of the great town and people in, in this room to take a minute, take a second to applaud people in the board and the candidates running for the board and the former board members, too. I would just like to appeal to the residents of the town that it's just not this meeting. The board members put in a lot of effort, a lot of time in the back room. They spend time on budgets, approvals, and things like that. So, I want us to take a second to realize all the hard work they're putting. So, thank you very much. That is all. Thank you.
Thank you. If you could state your name and address for the record.
Jeff Winston, 44 Fresh Pond Road, East Brunswick. The candidates for the Board of Education spoke tonight very eloquently. Not a lot of you paid attention to it, but I did. What they were discussing was a, a proposed contract. What they didn't mention on that contract was something very interesting. It would have been the reopening of your contract, Dr. Valeski. It would have been actually taking an existing contract, setting it aside, and creating a new contract. And one would obviously ask the question, how would the board let that happen? Well, it's interesting, because I will speak about it because I was on the board at that time, and it was not a board decision to make that happen. So, I will speak openly that there were two individuals on this board who decided to do this unilaterally before any of the board even knew anything about it. It was the president and vice presidents whose idea it was, and they approached Dr. Valeski. And then after the fact, came back and said what was to be done. Since it all is out in the open, for the good of East Brunswick and for the goodness of citizens to know the answer, there was a question asked by another board member, let's, why aren't we even talking about negotiations, which a former president of the Board of Education stated, "We don't negotiate for negotiation's sake." That's a shame. That is a big shame when you're cutting 51 people. So, while you were thinking about and signing off on a contract by retaining your attorney, there were 51 people trying to reorganize their lives, trying to figure out what's going to happen next to theirs. It's shameful. Dr. Magestro froze her salary in light of the same circumstances years ago, and that speaks to integrity, which Dr. Valeski, with all due respect, you lack all of. All of that being said, I've been asked lately, why did I quit? Now, the public knows. This is not a board of integrity. They don't include one another. Lori Lacks has taken upon herself, the president of this board, to act unilaterally on multiple occasions, redefining the definition of a board. You should be ashamed. Every board member who wasn't here, and I understand this is not on what you've done, now you know. Now you know. And do you stay silent over this? Is this the leadership and the, and the expectation you would have of a board president? If so, that is why you're being run against this year. This is the integrity that is lacking on this board. Support the Figaroas, Falco, and Braun. Get some integrity back in here. Lastly, I'll say thank you very much for your presentation, Dr. Bowley. Again, what is missing is there are no schedule, no expectations, no when of execution, just we're working on it. Measure this man. If you're going to give him a raise, give him a deadline on every single thing that he brings to this board. Shameful form of leadership. Step down, resign, and save my town money outside of Valeski. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Winston. If you could state your name and address for the record, please?
Sure. Jack Levitt, 4 Springfield Road. 2018, I was honored by the East Brunswick Education Foundation as a partner in excellence. It was an awesome night. But one thing I remember most was my sister-in-law. She came up to me and said, she's an educator in another town close to here. She said, "The most amazing thing about tonight, aside from your award, is the fact that the teachers in your town are revered by the town." And I was really proud when she said that. And I always think about that night. And I was thinking, as school starts this year, is it still true? And I remember hearing about teachers who would move an hour away and they'd still keep their job here, or they'd get offers for more money and they'd still keep their job here. But something about East Brunswick is no longer sticky. I see that teachers who didn't plan to retire as early as they did are retiring, saying they want to leave the profession before, while they still love it, meaning something about their love for the profession was, was disappearing. Or people now want to work closer to home. This is disturbing. I think we're having a big leak of talent in town, and we need to pay attention to it. In my work, I often talk about the fact that people don't leave their jobs. They leave the people around their jobs and the way they're being led. Something is in the air that people are picking up. I've asked the question over the last few years, and I hear, well, it's COVID and people want to work closer to home, or somebody even said to me that, well, the relationship between the teacher and the district is really the principal, so it must be the principal's fault. But this is happening at all 11 schools, and we don't have 11 bad principals. So, something is going on that people aren't feeling fulfilled or respected or loved for what they do. Studies also show that once money is not an issue, people really look for growth and development in their careers. And growth and development comes through professional development. And I know we had a budget problem last year, but we also said, we also heard you say that nothing was going to impact students. And this year, there was no professional development done over the summer, especially, especially after the culture crisis, after the yearbook incident, where everybody had their promise that we would have training and development for teachers to make sure that awareness and acceptance was taught in the classroom. So, what happened? I understand, I understand that there are certain rules. We have teachers who love to come in during the summer and set up their classrooms, and they've been asked to come in only the last two weeks because of building work, but...
10 seconds.
But why were some told that they'd be cited for trespassing if this happened? I challenge the board to go out and talk to these teachers, to understand what's going on, and try to get involved with them. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Levitt. If you could state your name and address for the record, please?
Mark Sizmar, 100 Fresh Pond Road. First of all, I came tonight for one reason, to thank Ms. Vicki Becker. I know you're not running again. The proper thing to do as a professional is to thank those for their service. And Vicki knows, I wrote the pencil speech. I mean that from the bottom of my heart. This board has changed, and I'm not going to sit there and say, well, I should have got, you know, parades going out. But I'm going to talk about Mr. Winston, whether you agree with him or not. I'm going to talk about Dr. Figaroa. Nobody was thanked for their service. And I'm sorry, I'll call you Mr. Irwin because I didn't hear your last name. You know, he spoke that, you know, board members should be thanked for their, for their volunteer work up there. That being said, the only person I heard talking out of line tonight, President Lacks, was Dr. Valeski, who spoke out when Dr. Figaroa was speaking. Disrespectful. President Lacks, you admonished Dr. Valeski for turning to the crowd, although Mr. Irwin was speaking to the crowd, asking for an applause, asking for things. That's speaking directly to the crowd. He was not interrupted. This board has changed since the six years I came on. It's disgusting. There is differences. You move time schedules around. It's not conspiracy theory. All of a sudden, tonight, the public is not important. We're giving you 30 minutes. That's it. The public should be the most important. The kids should be the most important. I could go on and on for 30 minutes, more than three minutes, about how security was affected. There's other things that have gone on in school that are eventually going to come out. And it's a danger, and it was a threat to our children. Thankfully, nobody was hurt. But challenge me, because I love this. And I didn't speak about February 1st meeting because I was afraid to get sued about talking about closed session. So, thank you to the team of Figaroa, Figaroa, Falco, and Braun that brought out this stuff. Because I was disgusted on February 1st that I had to swallow my words for months, knowing about Dr. Valeski to be up there and say to me, "Mr. Sizmar, you're a longtime board member. Let's be transparent here." Yeah, let's be transparent. Because that night in April, when we were in Hammer Sheldon, you should have told the people that there was all this money in the back waiting to happen. But no, no, this board has changed. So, to the newer members, I hope you continue to change, you know? And the new people that come on, there will be change, and I will support them. So, thank you very much for your time tonight.
Thank you, Mrs. Sizmar. If you could state your name and address for the record, please?
Excuse me. Wilbur Pan, 223 Milltown Road. 20 years there. So, I wanted to talk about something a bit different. And the only reason I talked, I'm bringing this up because I just noticed the items on the agenda for tonight. There are three items for people that help out the drama club at the high school. And I'm pretty sure, not exactly knowing how the rest of the meeting will go, these items will sort of go like that in terms of the discussion here, which is fine. But I, I wanted to acknowledge the outside impact that these folks have on the kids in the drama club. Because I know, because I've had the wonderful opportunity to help out the drama club kids with set builds on weekends for the past two years at this point. I do woodworking as a hobby. Somehow, I got roped into that. It's been a blast. The, what the public sees in terms of the drama club productions is not a whole lot. Then lawn signs go up, and there's a play or the Spring Musical, and it's awesome, which is, which is how it should be. What they don't see are how much work the kids put into these productions. And having seen what they do, I know that a typical kid participating in drama club puts 250 hours into any given production. A lot of these kids do it twice, so that's 500 hours. A lot of these kids do it twice, so that's 500 hours now. So that's what, well over 12 hours of a full, 12 weeks of a full-time job. So I just wanted to acknowledge the kids that are going to be putting in all the work for the two productions this year. Save Hamlet, I have no idea what it is, except it's about Shakespeare, and it's funny. And Mamma Mia by some band named ABBA. I don't know if anyone's ever heard of that. But they should be great productions. I'm looking forward to being able to help the kids out, build the sets again. It's going to be terrific. And to that end, I just wanted to acknowledge the work that the three people on the agenda are going to be doing with these kids, because I see what the budget items are. They're not getting paid nearly enough for what they do. Thanks.
Thank you, Dr. Pan.
May I correct the record?
You may.
I thought it was very interesting. I'm sorry, what?
I'm going to close the public portion now.
Okay.
Yes, you may. Before we begin with the board business.
I thought it was very interesting what this slate of candidates presented tonight. And yet, you answered your own question. Do you have any evidence that there was a public hearing? Do you have a signed contract? And the answer is no. You don't. Because the contract was never executed. Never, ever executed. But you didn't present that. And you want to talk about safety. Mr. Sizmar mentioned concerns about safety and security. And one thing we did discover is Dr. Figaroa did not have a current school safety specialist certificate. We don't have a record of it. It's in the system. It expired in 2020. Not sure about my contract either, Dr. Figaroa.
How was your, did you take through your school special?
Yes, I did.
There should be no cross dialogue. The public comment session is closed. Thank you. He's talking into the audience.
My fault, my fault. I did.
Yes, he addressed you, but it's not inviting a response.
Oh, so that I can walk out then on this discussion, because I think it's ridiculous.
Alex.
If you misunderstands 18A11 Special Agent.
Excuse me, there is no public discussion. We have a board meeting occurring. Public comment has closed, and a response is being issued. If you need to have a discussion, you can have one in the hallway. But please do not have a discussion, so it's disruptive to the rest of the proceedings. All right, then, I am actually, because we do have a limited session, going to ask for a motion to combine this evening's agenda. I do want to remind the board members that have items they need to abstain. When the roll is called, please state your vote and abstain on the section that remains to you. May I have a...
And one more. Also, just a reminder that there were a few additions that the board was emailed that are reflected on the updated agenda.
Okay, may I please have a motion? For Mrs. Herrick, and a second by Mrs. Goss. Is there any discussion on anything on this evening's agenda? Mrs. Goss.
I was smiling when Dr. Pan mentioned the, excuse me, the choreographer and the set design, because I actually sat, I sat and was actually very impressed with it. Because the people that we're bringing in are not just coming in to design sets and build or to create choreography. And if you've had a child who does dance, you know how much it costs to get somebody to create choreography for just one child. But in reading the description, it also says that they will be working with the students to prepare, they're teaching. And if we're looking at the cost for these people, for the 40 to 60 hours they're doing, I actually sat and did the math and was amazed, the value of this. And I do, because I work in a school, and I work in a high school, I see how much time and how meaningful drama is to students. And for some students, it is the lifeblood of their high school experience. So I just wanted to say, not only do I think that this is incredibly valuable to our arts and our students, but I can't believe that we get this kind of value for the money. It's just not that much. Thank you.
Is this the good or the cause of the board? No, not yet. Mr. Han.
Thank you.
So the item under the facility category, there are multiple change orders. So, Ms. Julianne, would you please elaborate on how the change order works? And then help us understand the change orders. So, under facility.
Certainly. So on any facilities project, there would be potential change orders that are the result of a variety of issues. One might be through building code officials requiring additional items or certain things to be done. Another might be where the scope may be altered a bit because of unforeseen conditions that may not have been known in advance. For example, if you're tearing off, opening up a wall, you don't know what's behind the wall until you open it up, and there could be circumstances there. It could be, just as another example, where the scope of a large project, and I'll use the new softball field hockey project as the example, scope of a large project like that looks much different on paper than it does when it's actually being built, and you're actually able to walk through it and start to see aspects that, you know, it may be a good idea to add some safety railing in this area, because someone might be injured if we don't do that. So there are various items that could come up that would cause change orders. The other side, and that would potentially increase, those items could potentially increase the cost. Then, on the other hand, there could be cost savings, where looking at the scope of work, certain things may not need to be done, and those would be reductions in the overall cost of the project.
Okay, thank you. So I forgot to turn on my mic, so I want to ask this question.
I heard you.
Okay, thank you.
Mrs. Reese.
I wanted to comment on the new student teaching agreements with TCNJ and Rutgers. I think it's a wonderful, thank you so much for that. For those that are familiar with, you know, when you go into teaching, you have to do a student teaching, sometimes it's two or three different assignments. And so to have Rutgers and to have TCNJ on board, especially with their teaching programs, I think that's great and gives us, you know, a wonderful opportunity to work with our local colleges. So thank you for that. And also, in regards to, I think this is number five in facilities, we're going to have eight rooftop units at both Frost and Warren Store for replaced. And you know how I like good air quality, so I, you know, we all do. For the kids, for the teachers, and the staff. So what this will do is, these are aging out, but it's also, you know, want to make sure that the humidity level is excellent and that, you know, we have proper breathing for those with asthma, have other issues and so forth. So these are kind of the low-level type of not, I guess they're not sexy kind of things that happen at facilities, but that they're important and for the health of the kids and for the running of the district. And, you know, I just wanted to thank, and then I think...
Barbara, I have to tell you, we do all know how you feel about air quality. And you are the first person to teach me that MERV was not just a short nickname for Mervin. So I'm proud to say that I know that because of your.
No, I know. I am sending an air filter with my kids to college. I do have to tell you, I got a mini one.
What kind of MERV does it?
13, 13. They're good, they're very good quality. I'll tell you the name if you want it. But some dorms do not have the, I have to tell you, oh, and I got to tell you a compliment. A compliment for the cafeteria food. And I, no disrespect to TCNJ, lovely college, but Emily said the food at the cafeteria at the high school was way better. Way better than the food at TCNJ. So I love TCNJ, they're very kind to my daughter. But yes, our food was at a higher level, and the choice and the quality was excellent. So they're there for quality of life issues. So I'll, that's about it for me for now.
Thank you, Mrs. Herrick.
Thank you. So again, I'm going to give a shout out to community programs. They're killing it, right? With their Brandenburg Sports Complex Affordable Option, fine when school is out. I also love, love, love the grant for the Special Olympics, the New Jersey Unified Champion Schools. So I think it's great that we're working on that. And I just have a question under, I think it's financial for the buses. So we're purchasing five school buses as part of our annual replacement plan. And so I know it says replacement, but I just want to confirm. Do we, are we replacing or use them to replace old buses? Or is there a possibility that we could use them, you know, as part of our regular fleet and add to?
We won't be able to expand the fleet further. Last, during this past school year, we did just that. We expanded the fleet by five additional buses. But we are at capacity in terms of the site for our buses. So there's no more room at the end, so to speak.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, then, would you like to squeak in?
If you don't mind. I tend to do that, right?
Go for it.
Is this the part where we can offer abstentions?
No, this is discussion on anything on the agenda.
All right. I got you, thank you.
I'll remind you again, no problem.
Thank you. What's that? Oh, no, I was going to, yeah, definitely, thank you. The big project that is concluding is the air conditioning for new corridors at multiple schools. And it sounds to me like this is something that was over a period of time, right? This has taken quite a bit of energy and resources. But I just want to commend all the people who are involved in that, certainly the people who are on site and having to deal with that. But will certainly be an improvement and a safety measure for all of those buildings. So that's a great thing that happened, so thank you.
And I'm going to ask the secretary to please call the roll and remember to abstain if you have a need to.
Mrs. Becker?
Yes.
Mr. Cummings?
Yes, with one exception, an abstention for the meeting minutes from July 11th.
Meeting minutes were pulled, so that's...
Perfect.
So they're not on the agenda.
Fair enough.
However, you do have a travel item.
Oh, yeah, abstention from that, thank you.
Mr. Goswami?
Yes.
And you also have an abstention. Yes, noted. Ms. Goss?
Yes, abstention, Financial Services, item 20.
Noted. Mrs. Herrick?
Yes, abstention, Financial Services, 21.
Mr. Hong?
Yes, abstention for item, Financial Services, item 22.
Noted. Dr. James?
Yes, with abstention from Financial Services, items four and five, as I believe they cover periods when I was not on the board.
Four and five.
Budget revision for month of May 2024, and then monthly certification of budgetary status. This is from the old agenda. They may have been pulled. Apologies.
No problem, that's why we checked.
Four and five noted, and you also have an abstention needed on item 23, Financial Services.
Correct, thank you.
Yes?
Yes, thank you.
Noted. Mrs. Reese?
Yes, an abstention on Financial Services, number 25, Travel Report.
Noted. And President Lacks?
Yes, with an abstention on Financial Services, item number 24.
Motion's passed.
Motion carries. Okay, bringing us to committee reports, information items, and the good or the cause for the board. Mrs. Becker. Thank you. Please bear with me, I have a few things to say. First of all, I want to thank our new student rep. You did a great report, and we look forward to hearing everything throughout the year. You really just caught our engagement right at the outset, so good for you. And yes, if you want advice about college, there's a lot of parents up here who give it to you. I want to thank the people, particularly those who spoke, who didn't walk out. I really appreciate it. I appreciate that respect that you show for each other, for our community, and for the people up here. Particularly those who are aspiring to sit up here. I really appreciate you not walking out in a dramatic fashion and slamming the door. It was just kind of jarring, no pun intended. Let's see, where to start? A couple of questions. Dr. Valesky, somebody brought up professional development, and it's so strange, because I actually got a phone call a few weeks ago that said that somebody called me up and wanted to know why the district cut professional development. And I said, which professional development workshop are you referring to? And they said, no, all professional development. And I said, no, no, I said, first of all, by law, we can't. It's contractual. And I don't remember sleeping through the part where we decided to cut all professional development. And I said, where did you hear this? And they said, it was a staff member reporting at a meeting. So could you just clear up the record, please, that we have professional development in our district?
We do. We have professional development scheduled for, actually, before the students come back. And then we're going to have a Professional Development Day in November. It's been scheduled out. However, the November Professional Development will be dedicated to bias training, and we're still planning that out. We had meetings with religious leaders over the summer with members of the Board of Education to discuss that. So we will continue to plan out through the rest of this year. And as I said in my superintendent's report, our really dedicated and talented staff are working together to make sure they share peer-to-peer in department-to-department and subject matter-to-subject matter, the best practices, and we will continue to support our teachers in that manner.
Thank you. I hope you all don't mind, but I do have a few other comments, so not trying to take up everybody's time. Another question, Dr. Valesky. There was something referenced about teachers citing for trespassing who are coming in to set up their classrooms. Could you address that, please?
I'm not aware of any teacher that was cited for trespassing for coming in their classrooms. I was at Warren Store for yesterday and spoke to a number of teachers who were in their classrooms unpacking, setting up. And we had very nice conversations. People were excited to come back.
Thank you. Yeah, that was my recollection, too. I can remember decades ago, going in and helping my children's teachers set up the classrooms myself, because I was involved in the PTA, and often had my kids with me. I understand that elections get contentious. Having served on the board for over 24 years, I've been in a few elections. I'm going to ask that people, please don't be cruel. Points can be made, especially to those people who aspire to sit up here. Be careful what you wish for. Because the reality of being up here is very different than a lot of cruel accusations hurled at the people up here. And you will find out very quickly how difficult this is, how incredibly difficult this is. And I do know what I'm talking about. I have not been re-elected for over 24 years due to luck or coincidence. I earned it the old-fashioned way. I put in the work, and I established a reputation for integrity. And I really would appreciate, if anybody has a problem with what I'm saying, that you don't laugh or snicker or make faces. It's really so rude. I've always been taught to respect my elders, but I really find your grimacing and laughter rather rude. So maybe you would want to exit instead of laughing at what I'm saying. Thank you. Every person up here has that same integrity. Every person up here has that same integrity, and they've earned it the old-fashioned way by putting in the time and working. And I don't care if you're on the board for three months or 10 years, but for anyone to suggest that our president and vice president did anything behind the backs of board members is absolutely outrageous, particularly from people who were here. I'm not going to play tit for tat, and I'm not going to do a recitation of outrageous acts by former board members. That's not what we're about. And if you don't know that, and you don't understand that, please do not run for this board. I was so disappointed to hear someone I have so much respect for suggest that we would purposely overcrowd a school to drive home a point. That is a real disappointment for me. I can't help but get passionate about this, because I hate to see what's happening. I thank you so much to the resident who came up and pointed the recognition for our kids in the drama program, but somehow there was an implication that we don't recognize them, and we've been recognizing our children in the arts for as long as I can remember. And I just resent the fact that people come up here and tell us what we should be doing when we're doing it, what we're not doing when we haven't done what they're saying it, and yelling and screaming and disrespecting us. This is not the way to run an election. I have great respect for anybody who wants to do this. And for those of you who are here and did not walk out, who are running for the board, again, I thank you very much. I think that's all I had to say tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Becker. It's a shame it has to be said, although I have to thank the board, because there is a lot of camaraderie and respect up here. And I know it was said that we have new board members on here, but I've noticed for people who've watched board meetings over the past few years, there is a very different feel when people are able to work together. So I'm appreciative of that. Mrs. Gwass?
Well, I had a few things, not as heavy as Ms. Becker. I wanted to thank Dr. Valeski for taking the time to give myself and Dr. James and Ms. Herrick tours of Bow Monroe and the high school. It is important as board members to actually be inside the buildings that we're talking about, and the time with the principals is even just more priceless, because they are so busy, especially getting ready to open school, and Dr. Valeski as well. And we spent the better portion of the day touring the schools. And it's just, we vote on facilities, and we, this is a very, very large system, these, the number of schools, so it is good to see them all. I had not been inside Bow Monroe since my daughter was about five. I think we played softball over there with very little people. So it, a lot has changed, and it was really good to spend the time with the principal and see what people are proud of and where we can grow. I also wanted to thank, you know, Dr. Bouchard's new, and he's so busy, and he spent a lot of time. We got to see the new softball field hockey facility, it's amazing. I ran home and said I got to walk on it before anybody else did, it's really nice. And I encourage anyone who hasn't yet found the high school Instagram page to go find it. It is worth following, and then you'll know what your kids are complaining about with the "as always" and the big pause. The other thing is, we've always said, social media is a great way, you're not the only one who complains about it, dear. Sorry. Social media is a great way to get our kids the attention they need when they're looking at colleges, and, and it's free, it's just out there. So to have administrators that are pushing our kids forward on social media in such a positive way is just such an excellent thing to do for them, for their future. So we really appreciate it. That's all. Oh, and some, I received an unusual question, much like Ms. Becker was saying, you know, people call and ask questions when you're on the board. And somebody asked, and I'm not sure why, she said it's been tossed around on social media, that there should be an educator on the board. So just to clarify, I am a public school teacher for, this will be my 33rd year, and I obviously started when I was two. It'll be my 33rd year, and I am in the classrooms of a high school and an elementary school all the time, and I love it, just to provide the clarification. Thank you.
That's great clarification, and I'm very appreciative of what you do in your classroom. But one thing I will say for anyone on the board and aspiring to be on the board, you do not need to be an educator, you need to be a collaborative type of person that can work together well with others. There's a lot of work to be done, and the best way to do that is to be able to do your own research, read, ask questions. As you'll see, a lot of board members up here will ask questions, that's how we learn things. Because unfortunately, the world we live in, it's very easy to put misinformation out there, and people will run with that, and that is a shame. But if you do your own research, ask your own questions, you will find the answers that you need. I'm very excited, again, to have you. I'm excited for all your co-students, from our very little to our seniors that are currently getting their applications ready. And I wish all our staff and students a very, very, very wonderful year. And did you?
Absolutely. I haven't closed it yet, so you're all good.
All right, good. So first, I'd also like to thank Dr. Valeski and school administrators for providing the board the opportunity to tour a few schools this summer. It was great to see how proud principals and staff are of their school communities, and an added bonus to get a sneak peek of the new softball fields, field hockey fields. We were up there when they were laying the first half of the new turf, and it was, it was really exciting. It's evident that our administrators are doing such great work in making sure that the project is done, you know, to make our students and our town proud. And I have no qualms that our students will be proud to represent EB while playing on those fields. The Special Education Parent Advisory Group has their first meeting on Wednesday, October 16th. Last night, we had a very productive parent meeting at the library. So I'd like to thank Louis, Louise Sultana, Colleen Canto, and Dr. Valeski for attending and providing updates and a continued opportunity for shared dialogue. Plus Rose and Jessica for all the hard work they do as parents for that meeting and the upcoming school year. So they're in the back. We appreciate also... We appreciate the library for hosting us. They continue to want to develop their programs to support inclusion, so it's really great to see our library getting behind that as well. We had some really good conversations and sharing of ideas that aim towards continued inclusiveness and collaborative teamwork to set all students up for success. And as we enter into the new school year, each day is a chance to learn something new for staff, students, and parents, for all of us. So embrace every lesson this year, and best of luck to our staff and students returning to school next week. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Herrick. And actually, since you mentioned the PTA, so I was able to go to the PTA President's Council with Dr. Valeski, their first meeting, and I made the promise that you're going to see the board at your meetings. And so we will be taking turns up here and representing the board at each of your meetings going forward. So Jamie Wasserman is going to get me the list of the meetings, and then you will see one of us, and then that way we can make sure that we're fully available to you. Mrs. Reese?
Speaking of PTA, favorite PTA president.
Oh, thank you, thank you. Well, I just wanted to, oh, thank you. A couple, a couple items, just an extra shout out, we already gave a shout out to the junior East Brunswick varsity and junior varsity cheerleaders. It's very exciting, the accomplishments that they're reaching even over the summer, and we wish them lots of good luck for the fall. As, as our president had mentioned, in November, they're going to Disney World, so it's very exciting. Also, I wanted to give thanks to the Guidance Department for having the college boot camp again, for those that have younger children that maybe have not gone through that yet. It's a wonderful service for our, our high school students, where they can get started on their college applications, because early decision, early action comes around really soon, not trying to make you nervous. And I think he's going to do very well, whatever he decides to do. And-
That chair has been very lucky.
Very lucky chair, very lucky chair. And, but it's a wonderful service, because sometimes the applications change, the rules change, the essays change every year, but there's just different things that happen each year. And our team, we thank them for all the hard work they do to get our kids ready for this next phase of their life. And also, I wanted to mention that our Student Life Ad-Hoc Committee has been working over the summer. We're, we have the planning phase to get it started in the fall. We've reached out to some folks, but we're in the process of reaching out to people. And would we say, probably the beginning of the, of the school year, within the next month or so, we're going to be reaching out to real-life students, right? So they're going to also have a part in our committee, because that, the committee's about them, right? So we want to get their opinions, and maybe students that may not have leadership roles in other parts of the, of the high school, this may, another opportunity for them to show their talents and to speak to us about what their needs are and what their concerns are, and improve their daily quality of life. I mean, we, obviously, the district works very hard to make sure that the students and teachers and staff have an excellent day, but there's always room for improvement, that's what makes us who we are. And so that's where we're looking with that. And just to wish everyone, like you said, a very happy and healthy start to the school year. It's an exciting time, new beginnings, and I hope that we can keep this a positive environment here, positive election. I think there's enough division and derision in the world today to fill 30 of these rooms. And I think perhaps our job here, as an example to our children, is to hold ourselves in a different way, where we give respect to one another, we can disagree, but we also have to watch how we speak to one another, because they're watching. And I think that that's important for us to provide a good example to our kids and to one another. Thank you.
Thank you. It's true, oh, all three of you.
So as, thank you to Dr. Valeski, and I want to ask one thing about, I, what I saw that there were a lot of back-to-school supplies being given, and people have appreciated that. So, not been asked, but I tried, I go to many places and I talk to many organizations. So one of the Lions Club of one of the towns, towns, I have spoken, and they are interested to give back-to-school supplies. So I would like to know how I can get them, and they can give those supplies to the school. Whom should I contact?
We can certainly coordinate you with, with Mrs. Blaylock, who does that for the district, does a very good job. Karen Mandler, right here, will, will make sure that gets done. So if you just call the office, call myself-
Okay.
And we can make sure that we, we connect the two.
I wanted to finish this question earlier on, but suddenly it came out. I thought of getting, they should be getting before 5th of September, before the school opening. Is this process continues whole year, or it is once a time in the, before the school opens?
We, just, it, it continues throughout the year with students with needs, and Mrs. Blaylock will connect with Mayor's Charity Fund. We actually do fundraisers here in the district. We actually raise money to supply families with transportation needs, so we actually have a fund housed in our finance department, so, you know-
Separate from the district.
Separate from the district, separate from the district. So, so Mr. Crotchfield, just so they know, it's not a ton of money. Do you recall how much we have in that balance right now?
It's just under $5,000.
Okay, okay. But we do raise money, the staff does, through a variety of like, you know, jeans events and things like that, or just straight-out donations. So yes, throughout the year, as long as we have a place to store everything safely, then we can distribute it.
And we accept the monetary, monetary amounts checks also, right? Other than the supplies?
Yeah, they'll take checks to go into the, to the fund. And once, again, to emphasize, this is not district money. Right, right.
No.
Right.
I have been talking in many places.
But to support students, as you said, and we will do it throughout the year. And like I said, Mrs. Blaylock is great about coordinating that and the needs of students and the immediacy of getting those resources to not only children, but the entire family sometimes.
Thank you, and thank you to you and the entire Board of Education, and all the students who are going to start their classes from 5th of September. All the best to everyone, thank you.
Just a couple of quick comments. The, there was a suggestion that came in tonight during the public session about board emails and communication, and I myself am a proponent for that. I think it's a really wonderful idea, and I'd like to talk to the board more about, you know, how to open up those channels more, so that we can more openly communicate with the public. So I appreciate that comment, and look forward to further having conversation on that and seeing where we can go. The other things that I wanted to mention, you know, speaking of emails, you get, as a parent in this district, I think most people know, you get a lot of emails at the start of the school year, which is, is good and fine, and, you know, but it's, it's a lot of, you, you get kind of bombarded with all these emails to get all the forms up to date. And I have to say, I understand it all has to happen, but the emails that have also come in from teachers who are sharing their enthusiasm and joy for the start of the school year have been really awesome. So I'm just really grateful for that, and certainly feeling that as a parent. And, and I just wanted to thank all of, you know, the, the teachers who are, who are jumping in here to a new school year, and of course, everybody else who's involved. And then the final thing I want to mention, this morning, I, I dropped my eighth grade son off at the high school for a little cross-country, you know, training, warm-up session, and it was really awesome. It was early in the morning, and I was surprised when I pulled up there and saw multiple different teams practicing, you know, out on the fields and in the stadium outside soccer, I think lacrosse was out there, cross-country certainly. So just, you know, such a great spirit, and a lot of, a lot of great teamwork that, that is already, you know, has been at work for a couple of weeks. So I just wish all those, those teams that are beginning and preparing to compete, all the best of luck with their new seasons as well. So thanks.
Mr. Hong?
So we had a policy committee meeting Tuesday night, you know. I have a jurispractic degree, I'm practicing lawyer, I'm pretty much keep up with current law, but it will, but I'm not specialized in school law. So when I review those new rules, new regulations, it's very difficult for me, even for me to understand. So I have to, I must go back to the law book, get the newest one. So that's, it's very difficult to be a board member, it's not an easy job. If anyone, you are ready to do the job, you campaign, or if you want to come to me, take my position, okay, I'm okay with it. So, but you are the model of your own children. Less respect to each other. I'm really stressed out. I try my best. I take my, I took my partner's, cut my pace 30%, because I need to spend time as a board member. It's very challenging, it's not a fun job. I'm not expecting anything but be realistic, be respectful. You are, I always told my children says, okay, I want you, be respectful to your teacher, to your friends, even to a person you don't like. So when you talk, you have the right to express your disagreement, you have the right to express your angry, but let's do it in a safer way, please. We're not here to earn any penny. I'm not billing, I'm not, I didn't send any bill to Dr. Valeski or President Lawyer Lacks. We are here to help, to help our children, to help this community, to make East Brunswick better. That's the sole purpose we are here. So regarding the rules and regulations, we have maybe thousands of those things. So people ask for, say, keep saying, says, oh, we sent email to the board member, nobody answered, nobody even bothered to reply. Please, by the rules, we just cannot do that. We have our own family, we have our children to educate, to spend time with, we have our job, we have our family to fit. Why we are here, every single one here, we want to help. We don't want anything from you guys, but please treat us safely, be respectful. You can run the campaign, I run so many campaigns, but I always be, run a very positive campaign. You should prove, you prove to, to your competitors, you can do better job. I never accuse anybody here, so if, you know, I just want to help. So if anyone, you can prove you can do a good job, it's okay to take my position, really. But it's, anytime I'm sitting here, I'm working my part off. I spend so many time reading the rules to communicate with East Brunswick residents aloud by the law. I did everything by law. I don't want violate anything. I'm trying my best to help, and I, for any candidates, please, you know, once you own the seat here, and I, I'm sure you are ready, but- but during the fight for the position, please, you know, do a good job. I wish every candidate a good luck. Thank you.
Of course. I'm sorry, I just, while we're talking about like rules, and, and I know, I know we're excited to jump into our closed session today. But I received a phone call very early this morning, maybe I could just have some clarification. And this goes back again to, to stuff that's put out there that we were starting our meeting at 7:30, I'm sorry, at 6:30, and then closing at 7:30. And so I had to kind of like explain that if you, like, our agenda is posted online. You can read through it. It said it, how we, if you follow it, it has how we put the closed session at the end. And it says we approximate to be in closed session today for three hours. And so it upsets me when information goes out that's not accurate, that says that there's anywhere on this agenda. And I even, when I received a call, I went on to the online agenda that's on East Brunswick Public Schools. And I thought, is there a problem, like, is there an issue? Nowhere on any agenda did it say that we were closing our meeting at 7:30. But yet, people just thought that because this was put out there, that that was the truth. And I want people to come to our meetings. I want people to feel that they can talk. I want to hear people. Again, as Mr. Hung said, besides this, we have to do New Jersey School Board Training. I was very lucky that when I first got on, I was able to do the whole weekend. And so I met a lot of board members from other towns. And we're facing the same difficulties that they are, right? And we're in constant, you know, contact and having meetings, you know. I know Jackson School District had lost funding again this year. And they wore T-shirts that said, "New Jersey State Funding Failed Us," right, to their last board meeting. And we're all in the struggle together. We may not all agree, but we have discussions that are respectful and are fruitful. And those are the important ones. And I know there's also been concerns that we get up here and we don't always ask questions. I get this agenda like about a week beforehand. There's no way I could come up here and vote if I didn't ask my questions in advance or need clarification about things. Like, we got this binder, I have so many little things sticking out. And it was the same for the budget. And I actually wanted to bring my bag that has all of our budget presentations along with a binder like this and, and probably papers that are more than this, and the hours that we spend in closed, on the phone, questions, you know, just asking for clarification. I, I couldn't get up here and make a vote unless I had the information, and we're, we're here to be objective. It's hard. You know, I'm one of the newest ones as far as election-wise. And I, I feel bad for some of the people that are up here that take it, that are getting it, meeting after meeting, for being experienced board members. They work really hard. I don't have to agree with everybody on everything. Like, there are many times, we have good discussions, right? They're positive. We want to be positive people in a, in a great community that we live in. And, and I just, like, I just want to share that because I, I feel that, that people have been labeled, Miss Fairley up here, especially the whole mean girl thing. And I, I don't really know, like, why or how that's become a thing. Again, as one of the newest elected members, I have not been treated that way. Anything that I've said or asked for clarification, and I've known, knew nobody on this, like, personally, I knew nobody on this board until I came here. I had questions about things in the past. It was one of the parents who was not behind trailers at Irwin or Wernstorf, and they didn't go there. I did not, was not in favor of seventh grade going to Churchill. And I had a very long conversation with Dr. Valeski years ago as a parent when that happened. And he spent over an hour on the phone with me. And that was, you know, I was a parent that just said, you know, emailed and said, like, I have concerns about this, and I'd really like to talk. And it, it upsets me. I'm not, I'm a very like, you know, I'm passionate about the things that I do in my life. This is something that I'm passionate about. And these people have become people that I'm passionate about too. And it upsets me to get up here, to stand here or to see on social media how they're talked, you know, negatively about. That's not the community I live in. That's not the community I want to live in. I, I know that not everybody is in agreement with everything, right? The budget was tough. It was tough. Nobody up here was celebrating and passing that budget. And I just think if you have a question, just call. Like, about the agenda today, when my, like, when somebody called me this morning, I said, here, this is the information that I have, just look on the agenda, it's on there, right? And again, I'm sorry, I'm going off, but I'll just say one more thing. Even about the stabilization aid that we received, you know, the administration, as soon as it was put out there, they did the paperwork that was needed for us to secure those funds. They put in, they put in the work. Again, we don't always like, I know that not everybody agrees with some things or the way it's done, but they work hard. During the yearbook, there were nights when I was on the phone with Mrs. Lax or Dr. Valeski, and it was close to midnight. And they were nowhere near stopping, right? Like, they had other people to call and other things to do. And, you know, it bothers me. I'm a very mental health person. I'm a very positive person, I'm a very optimistic person. I look at a lot of things as glasses more than half-full. But I just felt like, I get it, but, but please, these people work very hard up here. And I am very passionate about this, as Mr. Hung and other board members have said. So please, yes, it's election season, there are things you don't agree with, and that's fine. But instead of putting it on social media or telling somebody something, call and ask, make, you know, ask a question. Dr. Valeski, I don't think he will ever not, not set up a meeting with you. And if you feel that it's still not, then let us, like, let us know. We can answer your board emails. It's, it's New Jersey School Board and, and the law, right? Like, that we can reply to those things. If we all start replying, then it's like we're having a, a meeting, and it gets funky, right? And school, school board training, like, one training that I had was do not answer on social media, right? Like, stay off of social media. If you had a campaign page for social media, once, you know, if you're elected, once you're sworn in, stop using that page, like, stop answering unless you have, like, yes, school is closed for snow. And I get it, like, I get that people feel like we have to communicate more. But I'm trying to find out, like, it was really hard to come up here and be like, I want to be transparent, but we can't talk about personnel issues. Because those are, they're personnel issues, right? And those are private to people, and I wouldn't want them talked about if it was regarding me either. So please, understand the lines are not always easy. They're not black and white. And we try our best. And so I've gotten off on a tangent, but sorry.
Don't be sorry. You don't have to promise anything.
I, I just wanted to say, because Hammershold was mentioned, that I did have the privilege of being at Hammershold's fifth-grade orientation as a parent of a sixth grader, but PTA member, outside selling spirit wear. And we do have significant challenges with outside spaces at Hammershold. And there is a very active group of parents organizing around that with responsiveness from folks up here and with a lot of support from, from the Hammershold staff. So, you know, there, there are people who really care about these things here. And, you know, I know that we are moving on to start school, but I just wanted to try to close us on a lighter note since we do have a week of summer left, and just say that if you are not ready to let go of the summer for the good of the cause, for the public, we do have a girls' volleyball car wash on September 1st. So that's a nice summer activity. And we also have the Interfaith Council's picnic in the park coming up on September 2nd, which is a great way to bring the entire community together, and that's within Heavenly Farms. So maybe we will enjoy a few more rays of sun. Thank you all for sticking with us.
Okay. Well, we do have a need for closed sessions. So whereas the Board of Education must discuss matters which are not appropriate for discussion in public meeting, and these subjects are within the exception to the Open Public Meetings Act and are permitted to be discussed in closed session, the Board of Education intends to discuss matters as follows, those items listed on tonight's agenda. The length of closed session is estimated to be three hours, after which the public meeting of the board shall reconvene and action may be taken. Now therefore be it resolved that the East Brunswick Board of Education will recess into closed session for only the aforementioned subjects. And be it further resolved that the East Brunswick Board of Education hereby declares that its discussion of the aforementioned subjects be made public at a time when the public's interest in disclosure is greater than any privacy or governmental interest being protected from disclosure in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act. So moved. I'm going to go with Heather and Lori. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Which is hers? Thank you so much. Get home safe, and good luck to all the kids and the staff.